Okay, I'd like to call the Monday, November 15th, 2021 U-46 Board of Education meeting to order. Will call please.
Mr. Deveraux.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Nolan.
Here.
Ms. Owens.
Here.
Ms. Porter.
Here.
Myself. Madam President?
Here.
Okay, can I have a motion to move into closed session to discuss individual student disciplinary matters, pending probable or imminent litigation, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public or legal counsel for the public body, the purchase/lease of real property for use of the school board, the setting of a price for the sale or lease of real property owned by the school board, an internal audit, control weaknesses, identification of potential fraud risk areas, known or suspected frauds and fraud interviews, collective negotiated matters between the school board and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, review of closed session minutes, and individual student matters.
So moved. This is Veronica.
Second, this is Melissa.
Will call?
Mr. Deveraux.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Nolan.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Ms. Porter.
Yes.
Myself is yes. Madam President?
Yes.
Okay.
And Tim Sheehan will be back at seven o'clock for the regular board meeting when we'll do the proclamation, just so you know.
I'd like to resume the November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one Board of Education meeting. People could stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Will you do the honor?
Yes, we're on. We have two, as Superintendent Sanders said, I will do the first one, and this is Portob with the second one. So the first one is a proclamation of appreciation, American Education Week. Whereas the teachers who work in public education make a difference every day in the lives of students who come from all backgrounds, abilities, and incomes. And whereas COVID nineteen has required teachers to use their experience, creativity and talents in keeping students learning on track amidst a continuing pandemic. And whereas teachers have shown their dedication and flexibility by collaborating on the development of new district instructional models, learning and implementing instruction with new technology, updating their approach to engaging students, strengthening social, excuse me, and emotional support and much more. Whereas U forty-six teachers lend their special skills and talents to the efficient operation of the school system, serving our students and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas U forty-six employs more than two thousand two hundred teachers, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education recognizes its teachers during American Education Week, November fifteenth through nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and asks administrators, students, parents, and the community to join in recognizing and thanking these individuals for their dedication, efforts, and service on behalf of children and youth. Presented this fifteenth day of November, two thousand and twenty-one. Signed Susan Kerr, President Board of Education and Superintendent Tony Sanders. And I'm. Any teachers, please? We really do appreciate, especially this year, we know how difficult the last nineteen, twenty months have been, so we really do appreciate the work the teachers have done, so.
Board of Education, Elgin, Illinois School District U forty-six, proclamation of appreciation. Education Support Professionals Day. Whereas education support professional, including secretaries, para professionals, food service workers, operations staff, bus drivers, and assistants serve students on a daily basis in many capacities that contribute to the quality of education. Whereas education support professionals play an important role in the lives of student, students both inside and outside of the classroom. And whereas education support professionals work with teachers, school, and district leaders to provide a safe and healthy learning environment for students. And whereas U forty-six support staff members not only lead their special skills and talents to the efficient operation of the school system, they also have played a significant role in the district's response to the challenge posed by COVID nineteen. Whereas School District U forty-six employs more than one thousand six hundred staff members. Now whereas, now therefore be it be resolved that the Board of Education recognizes this talented education support staff prior to the Education Support Professionals Day, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and asks administrators, teachers, students, parents, and the community to join in recognizing and thanking these individuals for their dedication, effort, and service on behalf of the children and youth. Presented this fifteenth day of November, two thousand and twenty-one. President Board of Education Susan Kerr and Superintendent Tony Sanders.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate being recognized for our service as educational support professionals on behalf of D U A, the Paraeducators. Let me say thank you, and I will pass this over to.
I also want to say thank you on behalf of D two for being recognized. This really does go out to all of our ESPs. As stated, there's sixteen hundred plus of us, so keep up the great work.
The next item is Strategic Plan Report, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you very much, Madam President, members of the Board of Education. It's been a while since we've updated the board on pathways in general, but specifically with the Streamwood Pathway, the LEED Academy. A lot of work has been going into this in terms of curriculum writing that Mitchell Briesmeister and Doreen Roberts have been leading along with Tracy Stewart at Streamwood High School and their faculty. The teachers there have been doing an amazing job putting together a curriculum. Tonight, we are intended to bring forward an update of where we are in that process of writing the curriculum and also preparing you for the pathways' capital improvements that will be necessary that you'll be seeing coming up over these next few months. So with that, I'll hand it off to Dr. Teresa Lance to kick off this presentation.
Thank you Superintendent Saunders. Good evening, Board of Education, and again Superintendent Teresa Lance. After sixteen months, I'm finally before the board, so it is a pleasure, and I thank you for the opportunity. As our superintendent indicated, I'm joined by my colleagues, Mr. Mitch Briesmeister, Director of Educational Pathways, and Doreen Roberts, our Teacher Leader of Educational Pathways. So tonight, we're going to be, try to be succinct and brief with our presentation regarding our Streamwood Educational Pathways as well as the Magnet Academy. Mitch? So the purpose of this presentation tonight is to update you on two things. One, an overview of the LEED Magnet Academy at Streamwood High School specifically. And then the second goal is to give you a brief update on the educational pathways, the facilities update at Streamwood High School. But before we get into the logistics, I want to just highlight that Beacon Academy was our first Magnet Academy that was recognized as a demonstration school by the Magnet Schools of America, not only for meeting the expectations around multiple standards, but in some cases exceeding them. So all of our Magnet Academies will be responsible for showing evidence of those five pillars that you see on the screen. Those pillars include diversity, innovative curriculum and professional development, as well as academic excellence, leadership, and family and community partnership. Under each of those five pillars are multiple, well specifically, there are two standards. Under those standards. Do you want me? Would you like me to keep going? Okay. Under each of those standards are multiple indicators that our schools are responsible for showing evidence of. So for example, under the diversity pillar, specifically what MSA ask of us is that we are transparent and clear in our application and admissions process. And I'm happy to report that U forty-six, that we are doing that through our school meant process. Another indicator that they would look for is that we are really innovative in our curriculum design, that we are aligned to the magnet theme. So as an example, you will hear later on how we are intentional with our math being aligned to the business principles and concepts in our Magnet Schools of America, specifically at Streamwood High School. Mitch? So this timeline, it's a bit small for me to see, so I'm going to actually turn my paper. You will see on the timeline that this actually started prior to my arrival, as well as Mr. Briesmeister. But again, it started in two thousand and nineteen with Hanover Research, where they actually got some feedback from our community specifically around the theme. What was it that our community members wanted to hear? What did they want to see in our Magnet Academy? As a result of that, the theme was defined, and we launched a call to committee in two thousand and nineteen. That call to committee, those individuals who participated in that call to committee actually worked to define it and refine it even further. In two thousand and twenty, Doreen, Ms. Roberts, and her colleagues engaged in a curriculum writing process. You'll remember curriculum at that time had to pause because we were greeted with COVID nineteen. But when we returned, we continued to engage in the curriculum writing process. As a matter of fact, Streamwood High School administrators continue to gather feedback and participate in focus groups with community members, families, students, and staff. And unfortunately, we were pleased that the Board of Education approved in two thousand and twenty-one our incubator EDU, which is currently being implemented with our juniors at Streamwood High School. So tonight, again, you'll hear a little bit more about the writing process that we're doing with the LEED Academy. In addition, you will hear just very briefly what will follow in twenty-three, twenty-four school year. At this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Roberts.
So the, the theme of the, the Streamwood Magnet Academy is LEED. This acronym stands for the characteristics and concepts that will be developed throughout the courses at the Magnet Academy. LEED stands for Leadership, Entrepreneurship, Action, and Design. The feedback from the two thousand and nineteen survey indicated critical thinking, communication, creativity, problem solving across situations, innovation, self-directed learning, and contributing to the community as desired outcomes for the revised program. Examples of these attributes and action include collaborative group planning and designing a solution to a school-wide issue. Teams of students using the design process to run a school-based business, such as possibly a school store. The student teams would be responsible for learning the business and math concepts to operate the store. Students will also meet and work with community businesses or organizations to develop solutions to issues identified by the community partners. The LEED Magnet Academy will offer students a comprehensive program throughout their four years of high school. The academy will have relevant courses that complement and build upon one another. Community partnerships will be an integral part of the program. This will allow students to have real-world experiences and learn from mentors. The LEED program will also include opportunities for early college credit and opportunities for students to earn industry credentials. As the students and staff within the academy continue to work throughout, together throughout the years, relationships and learning communities will become a natural part of the LEED Magnet Academy experience. The example pictured here demonstrates how courses planned for LEED will be incorporated into the student's schedule. Acceptance into LEED will include career and technical education, math, English, and an elective LEED-specific course. This provides the unique course offerings for LEED as well as courses required for graduation and electives. The example shown here demonstrates how students who are in other programs such as dual language can also fully participate in LEED. The team has worked to design an inclusive program for all students. As mentioned, the team is completing work to bring forward courses for the revised Streamwood High School program. Through our internal processes, we plan to have recommendations for course approval to begin implementing the ninth grade curriculum for our future innovators in the fall of two thousand and twenty-two.
At this point, we'll transition to the update on the pathways planning for Streamwood High School. This section will include an update on the pathways proposed, the curriculum planning, and the facilities work. Here we see the proposed pathways for Streamwood High School. These pathways are aligned with the state and regional model programs of study that were developed in collaboration with ed systems, school districts, post-secondary institutions, and experts in economic development. Each of these pathways is designed to provide flexible opportunities for students to pursue high-wage and high-demand careers. Pathways are scalable, which means students learn that within each pathway, multiple opportunities exist, including direct workforce entry with an industry credential, apprenticeship, military enlistment, and pursuit of post-secondary education. A component of this planning is reinforcing that lifelong learning is an essential part of students' career, and they should plan to continuously build their skills throughout. Two critical components of the pathways development plan include the pursuit of the college and career pathway endorsement and alignment with the state and regional model programs of study. The college and career pathway endorsement was introduced through the Post-Secondary Workforce Readiness Act. And in simple terms, the intent of this endorsement is to develop systems so that all of our students graduate with the skills and knowledge to succeed in high-wage, high-demand careers and enter post-secondary institutions fully prepared for the coursework. The state model programs of study utilize extensive labor market research to provide the clearest information for our students, families, and educational institutions so our young people can make the best decisions for their future. This information will be utilized for the Finance, Business, and IT Call to Committee planned for this upcoming spring. To optimize pathways, we will leverage the knowledge and resources of all of our stakeholders, especially the Curriculum and Instruction Department, our post-secondary partners, and our community partners. Finally, two of the goals that will guide our work include increasing student industry credential attainment and increasing our dual credit offerings. Facilities update. In collaboration with Sheila Downs' team, Principal Van Dusen, Archon Associates, and myself, the initial planning meetings for the Streamwood Pathways update have been held. We've conducted two walkthroughs and several thoughtful planning meetings about maximizing student outcomes through efficient improvements of the facilities and equipment. Currently, the team is gathering more information and feedback from stakeholders to refine the plan. A focus on laying the groundwork to be future-ready is a cornerstone of this work. Thank you for allowing us to provide you this update, and this concludes our presentation.
Are there any questions, Kate?
Um, yeah, so I, I was excited to see this because, as you may know, I have a daughter that graduated.
Um, yeah, so I, I was excited to see this because as you may know, I have a daughter that graduated from the world languages. Um, and she was kind of heartbroken when she found out that you were gonna change everything. And I said, no, no, let's, let's wait, let's see what we get. Um, and this does look really wonderful and very excited to see all of this going along. I, I do have one question, though. I'm a little concerned. The kids who are in the dual-language program will not be taking English Lit, English Comp in English. They'll only be taking that, that coursework in Spanish?
So when the dual-language program, um, as they get into the upper-level grades, they still dictate what they should be taking. So they can have the opportunity to do it if it's part of the program as it's offered in English. But if the requirement is for them to take it in Spanish, they'll be taking it in Spanish.
Okay. So the dual-language kids would not be taking an English Language Arts class, they would be taking a Spanish Language Arts class?
Yes.
Okay. And that will be okay for them when they get to college? That would be my concern, that colleges also wouldn't take that Spanish language credit um, when typically it's English language credit.
Um, we can further look into it, but I believe that it's currently approved for them to be taking it to college.
And I would also add that Dr. Acevedo, who was the former director of Dual Language.
Sure.
We've been working in tandem with her to make sure that we were aligned, that our students would be set up for success. And now we're also working with our new director of Dual Language, Griselda Purtle, to make sure that moving forward, the work continues, that our courses are fully aligned. So when our students graduate, that they will be able to matriculate through college.
Okay. Okay. And then, um, prior to this, um, Streamwood has taught Japanese and Mandarin. Are those still available? Are those going by the wayside? Like, what's, what's up with those classes?
Well, they're not, they're not going to be part of the academy program moving forward.
Okay.
The language arts, languages are still available for students to take.
Okay. Okay. And have you had enough students the last couple of years to, to keep, or the last year or so this year, I guess, would really be it? Um, to fill those classes?
Well, I know that they're currently running.
Okay.
So there are students.
Yeah, there are enough students then. Okay. Thank you.
Melissa?
So just, um, kind of piggybacking on, on Ms. Thomas's, um, question. So with the, the Chinese and the Japanese that were previously offered under the, the academy, you said that they're still running those classes. My question though is, so a student that might be within South Elgin's boundaries or Elgin High School boundaries, any of the other four high schools. Um, and, you know, if they had wanted to avail themselves of that language, which typically isn't at the other high schools, they could apply to the academy and have access to that. And so how do we bridge that gap then for students that aren't within Streamwood's boundaries to have access to that? Those languages?
That's a great question. Um, I think that, uh, we would have to look to see if they're currently offered at each of those buildings. And so typically when they are offered, if there are enough students to run the course, they'll run the course. And if they're not, then we'll have to look into see what some other solutions might be.
Okay. Yeah.
Dawn?
Um, again, so, thank you. I was, I actually sat in on the planning thing for the community in two thousand twenty, and I was very excited to see an entrepreneur-type um, business layout. My freshman daughter was very disappointed. It didn't kind of roll out in time for her. She was very, but she's very excited to see it for the district. She's kind of been watching some of it with me. I do have questions. So slide eight is sort of the sample, um, schedule students will be taking. My son is currently at the academy at Bartlett, and that's why I ask questions and I kind of compare the two. And this is similar in such that it has two required electives each year. And, um, I guess my question slash concern is that when there's two required electives like that, it becomes more difficult for the kids that are trying to be competitive for some of the four-year colleges to have three to four years of social studies, to have three to four years of language, and be competitive for some of the colleges. Um, so I'm wondering if we've, how we're, if, if we've looked at that, are there ways that, um, if it's being taken into consideration? I know for my son at Bartlett, he's had to take courses outside of the high school in order to feel competitive for some of the schools that he's applied to, and most of his friends did the same. So while I can appreciate, like, looking at the electives, it looked really exciting. And I wouldn't want to change them at all because they look really good. Um, but it's, how do we make sure that the students that are bound for a four-year college are getting enough space in their schedule to get the electives that they're going to need? And I know, and I know when you go to college, you know, when you go to high school, especially when you go into the academies, you make a choice. Um, and obviously when students do this, it's, it's difficult because they're gonna be choosing between history, language, band, and obviously something is gonna fall through the cracks, more than likely it's gonna be the arts, which is hard. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that as we're looking at this, we're taking that into account and kind of looking at, I don't want to say the faults of the Bartlett Academy, but how the strictness of it has made it difficult for some of the students. I hope that makes sense.
It does. Um, I think the beauty too of our department, everyone isn't here from our department, but a part of our department is post-secondary success. So we have, uh, Michelle Chapman, who's our director, and Alexa Charche, who works specifically with our counselors. And because we meet bi-weekly, they are well-aware of some of the, I'm not gonna say limitations, but how do we work around, to your point, if a student is looking for something else, but the schedule is so tight? How do we fit that in? And so we partnered, as you know, we have the, uh, contract with Naviance that allows for our students to have very personalized plans. But again, making sure that our counselors are aware of students' specific interests, so we can address their needs. The other thing is that we're also trying to make sure that we align to the parameters of MSA, which says that we must have these theme-based courses throughout every content and subject area. But your point is very well noted, and we'll make sure to continue to bring that up in our meetings as well.
Can I ask a second question?
Sure.
So then, just, and this is, um, not about LEED. So then on the slide eleven, so just about the, the generic, uh, proposed pathways program, um, looking at the items, what is multidisciplinary? What is that in reference to on the slide?
So when it comes to the multidisciplinary, essentially what this is, is a shift away from the liberal arts to a little bit more intentional planning. So oftentimes we'll have students that their interests in the areas they want to explore don't specifically align to one of these pathways. However, with the multidiscipline, multidisciplinary pathway, what they can do is combine elements of these to make something that fits right for them. So for example, they might have, um, interest in healthcare, and then also interest in engineering, where they might decide to put together a little bit of a biomedical uh, engineering focus for, for their, um, experience in high school. So it adds quite a bit of flexibility, um, and then also the opportunity for our students to be really creative with the, um, electives that they pursue that uh, work towards their objectives.
So is, is that basically a gen ed like the students do now, or is it? Okay, because I just, I was, wasn't sure.
Very flexible.
Okay, thank you.
Jessica, did you have a question?
Okay. Um, well, first of all, as far as like electives go, that was definitely gonna be one of the questions I wanted to ask too. Um, I'm also in the Bartlett Academy, and I've definitely experienced some limitations with what courses I can take, so. Um, but in my experience, like, it had, like, I have had to find ways to kind of like balance it out. So I was able to take like the three courses of social studies and like the four years of band that I wanted. Um, and so Miss Martin, this might address some of your concerns. Um, like, I had to, like, drop lunch, um, sophomore and junior year? Yeah, sophomore and junior year to get in the courses and then, um, like, which I don't think is something that we would necessarily should be pushing to all the students, but like, for me, it was okay because like, like, it was an option, and I would much rather have a band than a lunch. And so having that option be available to me definitely opened up my opportunities. And I think, like, especially like going forward, there are some students who want to accomplish a lot. And, um, like me, like, I was not willing to compromise. So having that option available to students, I think, would really be beneficial. And then I think definitely like a lot of academy students at Bartlett have taken advantage of the independent PE. And so like, you know, it's not a course that we have to take during school day, and then it opens up a PE course for the following year. And I think definitely like making sure that we could push that out to as many academy students as possible because oftentimes, like, there are the kids who want to take more classes than anyone else in the building. Um, and so having them have that opportunity and maybe expanding it to the lower grades as well. Because right now, I think it's only offered at my school for like juniors and seniors. But letting it, um, be available to the freshmen and sophomores too, I think would really help open up those courses.
You said it was independent PE?
Yeah, independent. Um, we have like little fitness trackers that you have to get an X amount of minutes each week, take a quiz every week, and then just submit it for a grade.
Thank you. I have a question about what's happening at the academy now, because obviously we have a group of freshmen and the academy is in transition. What are they taking?
So the, the current students are taking the current program.
Okay.
Since this one isn't approved yet, um, our students, our current students will stay in that program with the exception of the incubator EDU course that we approved last year and is running this year. So when they go to their junior year, they'll be in the incubator course. And so the first group, once all of this is approved, would be the freshman of next year.
Okay.
And so they'll start in the new program, while the students that are currently enrolled will finish out the program that they're in.
So we should be expecting to see integrated math curriculum coming forward and, and other things like that. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, you'll see a lot of us.
Good.
They ask for names on their seats, so we'll have to consider that.
Couple of questions here.
John?
Um, so on the Magnet Academy timeline, uh, the, the Magnet certification probably doesn't happen until a little further out when you've got the, you know, the, the coursework's fully developed and are ready to submit. Is that fair to say?
No.
No, no.
No. With the artifacts, collections?
That's right.
I'm gonna speak to that.
Right now, um, they, to approve, to submit to Magnet Schools of America, um, you can do it at any point in time, just as long as you're showing that you're meeting the standards that, and the, um, pillars that were listed on the previous slide. So what Streamwood High School is doing right now is they're currently in the process of applying. So they'll submit all of their evidence by the spring, and hopefully by the beginning of next year, like we did with Beacon this year, we'll hear that they have accomplished, um, becoming Magnet School certified.
Oh, good to hear. Um, and then likewise, on the pathways timeline, you know, there's something here that says, what does it say? I'm not sure, but, uh, the call to committee for the, the finance and business pathway. Uh, oh, on that, on whatever slide that says twelve, it says pathways proposed twenty twenty-three. You've got to call the committee on one pathway. So what is the sort of expected timeline for, it's sort of the broader program here? Is, is it all sort of feasible that twenty twenty-three, we expect to open up all of these, or it'll, it'll be incremental at some point?
Mitch?
Yeah, the, the rollout of the updated curriculum will be incremental to some degree, just because we have, um, we, we have some limitations in our time, just some factors that you're already aware of. But we also have to remember that many of these courses were already in process for being updated. So, um, so some elements like our auto-tech program, they already had, uh, approved some curriculum, uh, last year. So there are key, key areas where we really identified that they're ready for that update, and it aligns really well with our regional, um, model programs. And that business finance one is an area where we really want to, um, push it forward and, um, get, get that done as soon as possible. So, correct, we want to, uh, celebrate the things that we do have and then, um, continuously upgrade so that we have a really, um, highly-aligned curriculum. And then once again, pushing those dual-credit offerings is a large project that goes hand-in-hand with our curriculum writing.
Makes sense. Appreciate that. Um, and then, again, this presentation's on Streamwood. So again, sort of fair to say, one, obviously what you do here is, is foundational for everywhere. If you develop a curriculum for a business program here, it could obviously be utilized elsewhere. Will we be hearing more about sort of other schools during these, these coming conversations as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you again soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Board of Education, thank you, Superintendent.
Hey, next item is public comment, and I believe we have three public comments.
Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting. We are now at the public comment portion of the meeting. Attendees wishing to make a public comment in person or via Zoom tonight were asked to complete a request to speak form in advance. Those who chose to speak via Zoom were provided with a webinar ID number to call in promptly at seven PM tonight. As always, speakers will be given three minutes to share their comments. The board listens to the speakers but does not respond to individual questions or comments during the meeting. A written response will be mailed to the speaker if requested on the form. Those who provided a public comment but chose not to speak publicly in the meeting were asked to submit an email to board@U46.org. Those emails were posted on the board agenda for public viewing. Buenas noches y bienvenidos a la reunión de la junta educativa. En este momento abrimos al público la oportunidad de hacer comentarios. A los asistentes que deseaban hacer un comentario público esta noche se les pidió completar un formulario de solicitud. Si eligieron hablar vía Zoom, se les proporcionó un número de identificación de la reunión en línea para llamar a las siete PM esta noche. Como siempre, los oradores dispondrán de tres minutos para hacer sus comentarios. La junta educativa escucha preocupaciones y preguntas pero no da respuesta durante la reunión. Si solicitó en el formulario, en el formulario de recibir una respuesta, se la enviará por correo. Se pidió a los que proporcionaron un comentario público pero decidieron no hablar públicamente en la reunión, que enviaran un correo electrónico a board@U-46.org. Esos correos electrónicos se publicaron en la agenda de la junta. Si necesita interpretación, por favor indíquelo antes de hacer su comentario público. Gracias.
Thank you. And I should also note, we do have one written public comment we received that people can see on board docs under the enclosures. So section twenty-three B. So our first speaker is Muragesh Patel. If you can just come up here to one of the, um, chairs and use the microphone, you have your three minutes. And you could, you could sit in the chair. Yeah. Yep, that'll be great. All right. And if you could just leave a mask up. Sorry. Yeah.
No, my mind is not a, it doesn't take three minutes. It's a quick question regarding the lottery system for the, uh, Gifted Academy. Just, I want to know what is the logic behind the lottery? And, uh, while in the online, I said, I don't need a response. Actually, I need a response. I want to, you know, from the board, I want to convince my, say, it's my kid or my somebody's kid and all, right? He has done all his work, hard work. He, you know, academically, he's motivated. And he's maintained his grade, and he knows he's good in schools and he's been working hard. So how do you convince that kid? All that doesn't matter. Your name did not get up in the lottery. I mean, you're not lucky. Right? How do you convince, if it was your kid or your friend's kid, how do you convince that child that none of your hard work mattered? Your number did not pick up. You know, just I want you to respond to that, and I'm gonna read exactly like that to my kid. So, that's all.
Okay. And the board does not respond publicly to public comment, but, um...
Sure. You, you can respond or email or however from the board. So whatever the email comes from the board, I want to, you know, forward that to myself.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And the next speaker is Adwitiya Balyan.
Hi, uh, my name is Adwitiya Balyan. I have a similar question, uh, to Mr. Patel. So this, the thing is, when, you know, we're with your kids, when they're coming through the school, the first thing is you're pushing them hard. It's like, hey, you need to do good, you need to study hard. One of the pieces there is, if they are coming through one of the COGAT or magnet academies, they are trying to push themselves beyond what they normally would do in school. I've seen a big jump, big jump in the sense, I saw him in first, second, third grade, what he was doing, getting in like, you know, having finished his work, getting in other people in trouble. And suddenly in fourth grade, there's a big change because he's been pushed hard. He's studying hard. And thereon, if, if you look at his COGAT and MAPS scores, he's been at the heights. I mean, he's been pushing hard. I have a similar question. You put a lottery system inside. Lottery system, but I, I work in the area of risk management. Lottery system means, to be honest, either you're doing random placement testing or plain, simple, lazy. What is going on? And that's a very, very big problem for me because my son is basically... And that's a very, very big problem for me because my son is basically asking me at this point of time, hey, you told me work hard, meritocracy, right? You told me get the good grades. I did. Shouldn't I be getting the first pickling into whatever the school that I want to choose? Isn't that how it works? And to be honest, the answer is yes. So there is a big gap somewhere here between what the lottery system has done versus as soon as he gets out of his 12th grade, what he's going to be looking at in his real life. And somehow you need to connect that. You cannot have a lottery system. And I asked this question last time during the open house meetings. I asked twice. And I said, please tell me what does this lottery system need? And I heard the word, two words, which really troubled me, equity, diversity. I want the board to really understand or understand this very clearly. Equity and diversity has got no place in meritocracy when it comes inside. Equity and diversity really means when the kid is coming to that starting line, each and every kid has the right resources and they are at the right place. Which means you fund the Dream Academy, you fund whatever it needs to be financially, like, you know, financially, resource wise, so that these, all these kids are at exactly the same starting line and they are prepared. But once they are there, you have the COGAD and state based testing for a certain reason. So that the meritocracy defines it. Maybe it's a weighted average of COGAD with something else. Maybe it is a weighted average of COGAD with their, let's say, all the last three years of grading system so that they get some, somewhere. But the meritocracy definitely has its particular. If you're going to tell me that the lottery system is going to work like this, there is a big problem because you don't get into the elite academies with just lottery system. It doesn't work. First, you fail because you just brought in somebody who's not going to be able to work that hard. Two, you're not going to be, you just brought down the whole academy. You have to make a choice. Magnet Academy really needs to define pushing the people who are at that place into a little bit higher, pushing them harder.
If you could conclude, please, thank you.
And the last thing is you need to make sure, of course, on the other hand, the Dream Academies and others, they are well-funded as much as Magnet, so that it defines it. I need an answer basically for each one of the kids, which is, is the lottery system fair to us right now? Or should it be changed? Let's make, thank you.
Okay, our third speaker is via Zoom, Dina Keller.
And Dina, I just unmuted you. Your phone number should, should be there to unmute and be able to have your three minutes with the board.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Dina Keller. Myself and my two children all graduated from U46. On November 3rd, with a heavy heart, I resigned as a school nurse from South Elgin after 16 years of service. I believe the demands that were placed on me were unsustainable and impossible to carry out in a manner that was in the best interest of the student's safety. I also felt that my nursing license was placed in jeopardy. I was repeatedly told, just do the best you can. Well, I am not stocking shelves that might not get finished or I might put chips where the cereal is supposed to be. We are talking about students' care, medication, asthma, seizure, diabetic, and life-saving emergency medications. We are talking emergency calls for altercation, possible drug ingestion, injuries, and other multiple situations. I'm sorry, but I didn't do the best I, I did the best I could is not going to hold up in a court of law defending my license or satisfy a parent. I brought the concerns of the COVID tracing, overburding the health office, and taking more hours than we were spending on the children's or the students' healthcare needs back in April, when the in-person population was only at 1,500. I was told they had a plan and it would be in place in the fall. Well, two weeks into August, no plan. The health office again notified administration stating we cannot sustain this pace and keep the students safe. The week I resigned, for three days, I was the only nurse for 3,000 students and 300 staff. I was averaging 70 student visits a day. I haven't taken a lunch. I barely have time to go to the bathroom. I put in countless hours of overtime, both paid and unpaid. I was told, that's your choice. And that may be true, but that was because my number one priority as a U46 nurse was always to care for the physical and emotional wellbeing of the students and their families. And with that not being able to be done any longer with the demands and the understaffing, I resigned. The students of U46 deserve the full attention of the nurses' time to care for their health needs. This really needs to be addressed. I am fortunate enough that I could protect myself and walk away. But there are many nurses out there that are working for U46 that aren't in the same boat. They're stressed, they're overworked, it's bleeding into their home life and their family life. And it's just, they're good nurses, they've done good jobs and they deserve better than what you're doing to them.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Hey, that concludes public comment. Next item is other business board member and superintendent update. Any updates? Oops. Anyone? Nope, Tony?
Well, first of all, in addition to the proclamations read earlier tonight for American education week, tonight is also, or today is Board Member Appreciation Day. So on behalf of all the administrative team, we certainly recognize the board's contributions to the school district U46 as its leaders and want to thank you for your service and volunteering your time, going above and beyond the call of duty to give of your time and your talents to the kids of U46. So we'll give you a round of applause.
Eva?
Last Friday, I attended the Latino on the Move Virtual Policy Forum and it was virtual and it was very informative. I enjoyed it.
Great, thank you. Jessica?
Well, last Tuesday was our second superintendent student advisory board meeting of the year. And this is like kind of our first one, we're really able to like, really get to go talk about like, some of the policies we want to address, talk about, we want to talk about how we want to format and some topics we want to discuss for the, for the student summit that's coming up in February. I think, I think it's coming up in February, which I'm very excited for. And a lot of students there seem really excited to be able to really get back to that, meet other people and share their ideas. But one of the things I was really excited about was the, we got a presentation on post-secondary success. And we were able to understand like what that department does. We were able to talk about, you know, the things that we really liked about that program and then some, kind of like some shortcomings that we felt were not being really addressed well enough, especially for first generation students and non-English speaking families. And so it was really exciting to see other students' perspectives on that. And I think it's a really good sign of what's going to come this year, just having so many engaged and well-soaked students knowing what's going on in their community. So I'm just really excited for that.
Great, thank you.
And it's great to be back in person.
Yeah.
Isn't it?
Hey, our next submission is for you.
There are four requests. There are four Freedom of Information Act requests that we've responded to since the last board meeting. They'll be available on the public website beginning this week. They're currently available on the board book. I'm available to answer any board questions.
Any questions? Okay, consent agenda, Mr. Sanders.
On the consent agenda, we have personnel report and workers' compensation cases, minutes of the board meeting for November 1st, 2021, termination of Stephen McFadden, driver's assistant, termination of Sadeha Thompson, driver's assistant, termination of Sharice Jenkins, a driver's assistant, termination of Lorena Moreno, a parent educator, and termination of Jose Santos, dean's assistant, a proposal from Business Services for iPad age and obsolescence replacement, a change order from plant operations for Sunnydale Elementary School pavement reconstruction project number 1460, and a change order from plant operations for South Elgin High School tennis court reconstruction project number 279, and one building permit, which is for the Creekside, Hawk Hollow, Hilltop, Illinois Park, Otter Creek, and Timber Trail Elementary Schools air-cooled chiller replacements project 2066.
Are there any items board members would like removed from the consent agenda? Okay, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. This is Veronica.
Second, you go Porter.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Nolan.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mrs. Porter.
Yes.
Myself is yes, Madam President.
Yes.
So passed.
Discussion action, Mr. Sanders.
Our first item are itemized bills for November 15th, 2021. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the list of bills in the amount of $10,224,275.46.
I have a motion to approve the list of bills in the amount of $10,224,275.46.
So moved, because Veronica.
Second, this is Melissa.
Any questions for Mr. Vernich? Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Nolan.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mrs. Porter.
Yes.
Myself is yes, Madam President.
Yes.
Our next is a discussion action item. That's an emergency request from administration. It's a contract for the Deputy Superintendent of Instruction with proximity learning. Mr. Phelps, Brian, Chief of Staff Lindholm and Deputy Superintendent Johnson are all at the dais if the board has questions. With that, administration recommends approval of the contract with proximity learning in the amount of $472,799.20 and requests authorization for the district administration to execute related documents. This will recharge the educational fund and reimburse with funds from the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund and the cost is included in the budget for this fiscal year.
Could I have a motion to approve the contract with, well, this lost the proximity learning? So moved.
Second.
Any questions for? Yes, Don?
So, um, the tutoring, I'm assuming that this is all Zoom-based tutoring?
Correct.
Do you have any idea how many students each tutor will be dealing with on a daily basis? Or it may depend?
It's actually kind of the beauty of this is that they can be very flexible. So it will depend how many students kind of per grade level or per content area are under quarantine. And they'll be able to sort of manage flexible rosters as these students come in and out of quarantine.
Okay.
And is it, I'm sorry, I didn't raise my hand.
Oh, wow. I'm wondering if we don't have the same question, actually. Is this going to be happening during the school day or after school?
We can actually do both.
Okay.
It would be available during the school day.
Okay. And the families would have some input then in what works best for them or the district will decide which it is?
Again, with the flexibility, we could do both.
Okay.
One of the areas of feedback we've received, of course, is the need to be able to be flexible to meet the needs and interests of students and households, realizing that not all households have someone available to support the online tutorial during the school day.
Okay.
And others, of course, after school would be more better suited.
Okay. And then just to clarify a little bit, the intention for this is to provide instruction for kids who can't be in a classroom due to quarantine?
That is correct. So to be able to go ahead and support the curriculum and the instruction that is occurring in the classroom, it's really not meant to replace. So when we use that term tutorial, it is really to support the learning, utilizing our curriculum, utilizing the resources.
Okay.
The continued expectation that teachers make all of those resources available to our students and that we work with proximity learning to make sure that they also have access to those resources.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
John?
So, in that regard, is it push or pull or some combination? So are students, will they be sort of expected to check in with these tutors? Or is it when they email their teacher, teacher passes that off maybe to this group to, to provide support?
Sure. So we will be working to establish a process for enrollment with our site administration as well. Of course, the challenge with anything is requiring or that insistence that students log in to participate with the tutorials. We do know that the more flexibility we can create, the more likely it is that our students will be successful in logging in and accessing these tutorials. So it will be creating that process and then documenting those students who are participating.
Yeah.
Where this will really help is some schools who've had more volunteers of teachers on the site who've agreed to take on these tutorials and the students have some good options. And there's other schools that there really just aren't a lot of teachers providing those tutorial sessions now. So this will provide opportunities to them.
Good, thanks.
Don?
It mentions that there'd be 16 licensed teachers. Do we know kind of the breakdown of the licensing of those teachers, like elementary versus middle school versus AP level?
Actually, yeah, so we asked for one teacher per elementary grade level, pre-K through six, who would sort of cover all, all the content areas. And then middle school and high school, it's one teacher for each of the four content areas at the middle school level and then one for the four content areas at the high school level. So English, math, science, and social studies.
Eva?
So when you mentioned the content area, these are tutorials, but this aligns with the curriculum that's still being taught in the classroom. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, that is our goal and that's why there would also be some additional work that of course needs to be put in place prior to the implementation, which is why we're bringing this to you this evening because realizing we will have to work with proximity learning, make sure that our curriculum and resources are available to support this process.
Proximity actually, I'm sorry.
Okay. No, go ahead and finish with your reply. That's fine.
They use the same Canvas learning management system. So really it'll be a matter of us making all of our resources, our scope and sequence documents all available to them. So when they offer these tutorials, they'll have access to all the resources. They'll know what all the kids should be studying in that particular week, so.
Okay. Do you anticipate having this available, like are you rolling it out across grade levels? I mean, how do you expect this implementation to go?
Yeah, we're going to need to roll it out across grade levels. I mean, what we see from the most recent current data from our site is that it's, it's about 65% of our sites who have reached out and requested support and assistance with providing these tutorials and that is across all of our grade levels. So, you know, I, I believe I, you know, when I, when I last looked at it, provided some of that information. We certainly, we don't have any place where we're totally running tutorials across elementary, middle, and high school. The one exception is with, with, with pre-K. So we have had this ongoing committee that's been formed and has been providing oversight and has been working to try to make adjustments to what has been put in place, to try to get as many teachers as possible. But we recognize really that it's best for our earliest learners is the ongoing regular check-ins with their regularly assigned teacher. So our pre-K students would be the exception to what we are bringing forward with proximity learning.
Okay. And is proximity doing this with other districts? This, this type of tutoring for students in quarantine?
Um, I think, I think the model varies slightly across the nation with, with what they are working to provide, whether it's tutorials or whether it's full-time instruction for students who are like enrolled in a full-time distance learning.
People say that it's the November 15th board meeting and it is 8:09 PM.
Okay. I believe we're in the middle of discussing proximity, the proposed proximity contract, which everyone asked their questions. Okay, I think Kate did, we never took a roll call. Okay, I think, uh, Kate, did we, we never took a roll call on it.
No, I have a first and second, but not a roll call.
Okay. So any more questions? All right, roll call, please.
Okay, Mr. Deveraux.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Nolan.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Porter.
Yes.
Myself is yes, Ms. Kerr?
Yes. Okay, other business, student disciplinary cases.
Um, the matter for the board is whether or not to expel student A for the term of two semesters, the first and second semesters of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. While serving the expulsion, student A will have the opportunity to enroll in an alternative education program. Administration recommends the board expel student A as defined.
So could I have a motion to expel student A for the term of two semesters, the first and second semesters of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year? Student A will have the opportunity to enroll in an alternative education program.
So moved.
Wait, I'm sorry, who was first and Veronica was first? Okay.
And second.
Melissa will take the second. Okay.
Um, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux.
No.
Ms. Martin.
No.
Ms. Nolan.
No.
Uh, Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mrs. Porter.
No.
Um, myself is yes. Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
Okay, but that is four to three, so did not pass.
Okay, next item is CAC update. I don't believe we can have a CAC update.
We did have Tracy Kelly with us. So for the record, I will note that Tracy Kelly was on the Zoom with us until we lost internet.
Okay.
Can I do something quick for CIC?
Sure.
Um, I was on the November fourth meeting with them and they did a presentation on managing anxiety and a mental health presentation. Um, they are still in the process of posting the video on their website, but the slideshow is up. If anyone is interested, I highly recommend you go back and look at the slides and watch the video when it is up. It was a very, very good presentation. Um, the guests that they had, I'm going to apologize because I don't, uh, I wasn't prepared to say this. I don't have their, um, the names offhand, but they did a fantastic job. They'll be doing a part two as part of the February CAC meeting. So, um, I, which would recommend people put it on their calendar. I was, I was very impressed and I thought it was very informational.
And then can we just mention that the roundtable meeting is on December second at seven PM via Zoom?
Yes.
And that's the meeting where board members and cabinet members are in attendance to have conversations with CAC members and the general public.
So, um, Tony, just an aside, a side note here, that the student A, the executive content and stuff doesn't appear to be available. So I'm not sure that board docs is up fully.
No, it's not. It's, we don't have.
Some of it's up, but not all of it.
Yeah.
Point would be if someone needs something on executive content, we don't have access to it.
Uh, you did during, during the closed session part of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's on there twice.
Yes, but moving forward, if we need something on something else coming up, we don't have access to it.
Oh, because it's not on, because the internet's down.
Because of the internet, it seems to be working properly. Executive contact is not available. At this point, it was earlier.
Understood.
Okay.
Okay, next item is work session, twenty twenty-one tax levy.
Mr. Burnage is joining us to walk through both the tax levy resolution and the follow-up item, which is the certificate of the tax levy. Mr. Burnage? Yes, uh, these two items go together. The tax levy resolution is an annual resolution, uh, needed to allow administration to file the certificate of tax levy. Uh, the certificate lists the levy amounts requested for each fund with a total amount of three hundred million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. The resolution and certificate of tax levy are filed with the county clerks and must be filed by the last Tuesday in December. Administration recommends adopting the resolution and certificate of tax levy at the December thirteenth meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Burnage? And this is a work session items, we are not voting on this.
That's correct. You vote on December thirteenth. Yep.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Um, next item is work session contracts over twenty-five thousand.
We have one item under the resolution, or contracts over twenty-five thousand. Uh, the first is the one and only is a contract for the Deputy Superintendent of Instruction with NIU LEAP Program for Para Educators. Uh, Ms., Mr. Phelps is here with us along with Dr. Johnson. Administration recommends approval of the contract with Northern Illinois University in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars and requests authorization for administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the educational fund and reimbursed with funds from the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund and the cost is, is included in the budget year.
Are there any questions on this contract? Hey, thank you.
And finally, oh, sorry. But finally, we have a work session for change orders. Um, the only change order is from plant operations for window and lintel repair at Ellis Middle School, project number four twenty-seven. Uh, administration recommends the board approve the change order, uh, of minus forty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and fourteen cents from F H Passion, S N Nielsen and Associates are the two contractors.
Any questions on the change order? Okay, so I need to have a motion to move back into closed session. So could I have a motion to move into closed session to discuss individual student disciplinary matters, pending probable or imminent litigation, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational settings, or specific volunteers of the public or legal counsel for the public body, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of school board, the setting of a price for the sale or lease of real property owned by the school board, an internal audit, control weaknesses, identification of potential fraud risk areas known as suspected frauds and fraud interviews, collective negotiating matters between the school board and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, review closed session minutes, and individual student matters.
So moved. This is Dawn.
Second, this is Melissa. Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Nolan.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mrs. Porter.
Yes.
Myself is a yes, and Mrs. Kerr?
Yes.